Okay.
All right, 7:00 PM, we're gonna call the meeting to order Monday, November 10th, 2025. It is 7:00 PM, we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for following along. Determination of a quorum, we do have a quorum for tonight's meeting and approval of last month's minutes.
Make a motion approve last month's minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, moving on to continued items, consideration of vacant building ordinance drafting fees. And it looks like we do have a copy of it right here. And Attorney Edwards and Mr. Manager Deonah, would you all like to take it away from here?
Sure, I'll start. Attorney Edwards and his associate Attorney Barry have, sorry, I'm so used to calling you Nick, I apologize. Attorney Barry have reviewed the document, they also provided us an amendment for 118, which is the civil penalties, so now those are conformed with statute. The thing that was missing in the vacant building ordinance is, I think, covered in maybe a little too well. The next item, which is the commercial building maintenance ordinance, and that is the detail. So, but I think largely it is complete. I will say that in researching the fees, the two closest communities to us that have a vacant buildings ordinance charge no fees, it's basically a punitive ordinance. So, the fines are really, you know, what accumulate for people who don't comply. But there's no, there's no cost to register your building. So that's what I would recommend to this board.
That's what I gathered when I was reviewing the ordinance.
Perhaps Attorney Edwards would like to add something to that?
No, but I guess, and you're okay with them, you're okay with them considering this first, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Right, so I guess in conjunction with the ordinance that the town manager is proposing, we would suggest that the town board consider adopting the resolution updating Section 1-118, 1-18 regarding penalties, this resolution first. There was a change in the state statute about how penalties could be imposed by towns. And this change that we're proposing just brings the town's ordinances up to date with the state statute. So, we would recommend that. And then, once you do that, then as you consider the other ordinance, which really, the more details the town manager can answer about that, then these two things can work together. If that makes sense. But I guess I would, I would first say, consider the resolution for 1-18, and I can answer any questions about that, but it's pretty straightforward. Well, I'll take, I'll take one more minute to speak about that. So there was many, many years ago, when the town worked with, when John Hope was here as a town manager, they did a big push with the company to go through all the ordinances the town had, plus the minutes from the meetings, to make sure that we had the town ordinance book up to date. And it was one of those situations where we had a book in the town hall that was somewhat accurate, but not 100% accurate. So there was a big effort to go through everything and make sure we had accurate ordinances, and also to bring the ordinances up to date with the statutes. And in that effort, my former law partner, who's retired, Liz Fairman, who was the town attorney, worked with Mr. Hope to go through the ordinances and to take out all the individual penalties for different violations of the ordinances and to consolidate them and just have one section in the ordinances that cover penalties for violations. So, you know, before, if you, if you violated this ordinance, you had to go look at that ordinance to see what the penalty was, and violated that ordinance, you had to go look at that. And it was a kind of a hodgepodge of that. And so, years ago, the ordinances were updated to consolidate into this section. There, over the years, as the town board has passed additional ordinances, there probably has snuck in there a few more places in the ordinances where it says in that new ordinance that the board passed, if you violate this ordinance, this is the penalty. So it's-
Zoning is a good example of that.
Right, right, so it's not quite purely that, you know, my preference would be, be purely that there were no penalties in the ordinances except 1-18, but it's not quite that pure, which is, which is fine. But, but that's what 1-18 is, is that when anybody violates any other section of the ordinance, then this is where you go to see how you penalize them or how you impose a fine. And then, to repeat what I said before, the legislature of Raleigh updated the order, updated the state statute as to what towns could impose fines for. And, and so that's what this is, is just getting this section of our ordinances updated with the state statute.
Can you please explain to me the misdemeanor part? Violations of this code subject offenders to a class three misdemeanor?
Yeah, well, I think it's basically, I think the legislature was wanting to make sure that municipalities were not imposing too onerous of penalties on citizens. And so, the general assembly says, of course, that towns can impose fines, including, and of course, and this has come up over the years, when the town is imposing a fine on somebody, it can either be a criminal violation or it can be treated as a civil violation. If it's treated, if, if, if somebody is, if it's a criminal violation, then of course, that's prosecuted by the district attorney, and that's how that penalty is imposed. If it's a civil fine, then they have a fine, a monetary fine that they owe to the town, and they hopefully will pay the monetary fine. If they don't pay the monetary fine, then the town's remedy is to take them to court and to enforce that debt, which we, fortunately, in one sense, fortunately, the town hasn't had to do that very much. Unfortunately, when people don't pay fines, there is a cost benefit analysis of if somebody owes $100 to the town, it's not worth $1,000 of attorney fees to collect $100. There's that going on on the civil side. But to get back to your question about criminal violations, that you can charge somebody with a criminal violation for violating a town ordinance. However, this is, this is an exception that, as you can see under that paragraph with a small a, if there are no new alleged violations of the local ordinance within 30 days from the date of the initial alleged violation. So if somebody violates an ordinance once, but doesn't repeatedly violate the ordinance, then you can't charge them with a crime. And in paragraph B, if the person provides proof of a good faith effort to seek assistance to address any underlying factors relating to unemployment, homelessness, mental health, or substance abuse that might relate to the person's ability to comply with the local ordinance. So, if somebody is suffering those factors, unemployment, homelessness, mental health, or substance abuse, then the town is to be forgiving and not in charge, charge them with a criminal penalty. And it's an overall effort from Raleigh not to over criminalize poverty and mental health issues. So if somebody has a mental health issue, and that mental health issue causes them to violate the ordinance, and they can show that they're trying to get help, then you shouldn't charge them with a crime.
And to confirm that this is for code enforcement? Well, not for other misdemeanor criminal acts, just to clarify that, because you've been using it very broadly, and I know we all understand that. But just for anyone that's watching, understands we're talking about misdemeanors related to code enforcement, not to any other.
Well, when you say code enforcement, it's code enforcement of the town ordinances, any part of the town ordinances.
So, so what this does is where we have ordinances that may not have a specified fine currently, this makes sure that at least every ordinance violation, no matter what that ordinance be, can, would be a $100 fine unless it's otherwise specified in our code, a different fine. So this kind of covers us to make sure every ordinance at least has this fine.
Right, but-
And it can be a misdemeanor unless A or B.
Correct, yes, that's correct, yes, that's correct.
So by, by making it a misdemeanor, if it is a repeat violation or if it continues, then that gives the town more ability to be able to try and enforce and collect that fine, correct?
That's right, yes. And I can't, and like I say, this is an overall effort that was addressed in the legislature. I can't, I don't think this is a day to day issue that comes up much in the town of Springville as, as the town enforces its ordinances. So, we're making, we're recommending this change to come into compliance with the statute, this, but it isn't really a day to day problem that we're having to deal with. I don't think it will have much of an impact on how the town enforces its ordinances from what, from way we were enforcing it before this and the way we enforce it after this. It won't have much of an impact.
If, if I could take the board back to the beginning, when we first started talking about this ordinance, we looked at the penalties that, that 118, chapter 118 provided, and I think we noticed that it was not in compliance with the current statute. And, and that's why Attorney Edwards and Attorney Barry have revised it so that it now is in compliance with it. But this actually was already in the statute, it just, or in the ordinance, it just didn't conform with the statute.
Correct.
The statute.
Right.
Did that summarize that?
Yeah, correct, that's right.
That makes it simpler. So the only thing that changes was underlying, everything else was there. That makes it much simpler.
That's correct.
And the only thing struck through was shell, and will become May, right? Perfect, all right. Any further discussion or questions from the board? And so, we have a resolution, the Board of Commissioners of the town of Springville adopting an amendment to the Code of Ordinances. And is this specifically what we're voting on? It does have a signature page behind it.
That's right.
Okay.
So in order to bring us in compliant with state statute, I make a motion that we accept resolution for the town of Springville to adopt an amendment to the Code of Ordinances as presented for Section 1-18.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, so that's gonna wrap up both of those. Are we, no, we're still looking at the maintenance-
The vacant buildings. Okay, so the, the one that still says draft on it. And so, that, the, if you, there's a page, if I may, sure, again, like this in front of you. This is the, the part that has changed to comply with what you just adopted. So it refers back to that chapter as the civil penalty for non-compliance.
That's chapter six.
Right.
Do we need to adopt this amendment?
The, it would be the amendment in entirety, the draft, yes.
So that did handle one into-
Right.
Okay. All right, moving on to the new items. Number one, receive resolution extending extra territorial-
You want to take a vote, Mr. Mayor?
We're still on that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're still on that one. We need a-
All right.
We need a motion on that.
I make a motion we adopt the vacant commercial property-
Vacant buildings ordinance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you Commissioners. Moving on to new items, receive resolution-
You gotta do number two, do you have to do number two?
We just did the, the first one.
Consideration commercial building?
That's, that's the one we talked about at the last meeting, that the, the commercial building maintenance ordinance, which has specific standards referencing the building code. So that was in your packet. Actually, the pertinent sections of the building code were highlighted in, I believe it was green.
There was some yellow and some green.
There's a yellow and some green, yeah.
We call it blue or green.
So, so that is a very specific maintenance ordinance. It has a lot of specificity to it. So, enforcement of that would have to be somebody like the Nash County building official. So we would have to rely on Nash County for enforcement of that.
What's the point?
The point is you would, that it would be a tool to hold vacant property, property owners of vacant properties to a standard. It basically would mean that they would be subject to maintaining their property in almost a saleable or rentable condition. So, that's something for the board to consider. If you're not ready to adopt it tonight, you know, it's-
If you remember, we had some developers come to town some time ago, and they made us aware that some of the other towns in our immediate area had implemented things like this, which had greatly increased their ability to develop their downtown areas, and had helped them attract new businesses to the downtown area, which is part of what drove us to have this put in the packet.
That's right. And I actually spoke with the planner in Franklinton just this afternoon, and he said they're down to their last vacant property that they're dealing with. Yes. Bless you.
I think the, maybe the thing that may come up biggest in question with like building owners is gonna be, does the interior also have to be rentable or sellable?
Well, you can look through the proposed ordinance, Mr. Mayor. You can see there's a lot of standards with how to maintain windows and the facades, plumbing. Plumbing has to be workable plumbing, there are lots of-
Has to be up to code.
Basically, yes, it has to be up to code.
Has to be up to code.
If you can see inside the building, it has to look presentable.
That's definitely needed.
That is, that's great.
So what are we to do, what are we going to do with the consideration of commercial, would you table it right now?
That's up to the board.
Any feedback from the Commissioners on anything they'd like to see included or taken out or changed on the draft?
I didn't, it was pretty good to me.
Okay.
It was good to me, too.
It did.
And if we approve it, if, I mean, if something big comes back and we need to change one sentence and it can be changed later?
Yeah.
Without holding this up?
Yeah, that's true.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the commercial building maintenance ordinance.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, perfect, thank y'all so much. Okay, receive resolution extending the ETJ extraterritorial jurisdiction and schedule a public hearing. Mr. Manager, can you please tell us all about that?
So, Mr. Mayor, we undertook this journey in June of 2024, I believe, when we started talking about extending the ETJ to comply with a one mile radius as provided by statute. So, we have notified the property owners, I've taken many calls and seen a few people here in the office, and answered many questions about what that means. This would be to receive everything tonight and schedule a public hearing for December 1st and hold that hearing on December 1st.
I make a motion that we adopt resolution seeking expansion of extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Thank you Commissioner Ganey, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you Commissioner Griffin, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank y'all. Moving right along, not a long agenda this evening. Okay, reports, we'll start with Springville Chamber, is anyone here from the chamber? Okay, code enforcement. The floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council Commissioners, thank y'all once again. For our November report, we still kind of have the same things going on, the same properties that we've been discussing, that we have fines on the 322 East Nash Street, the 508 East Nash Street, 409 West Main Street. That one has been cleared, but we still got open fines on that one. 804 East Nash Street has been cleared, still open fines on that one. 206 Hopkins, same thing, that one's clear, still open fines on it. 120 South Ash Street, that one has been completed, just still open fines. 408 West Nash has fines on it, and that one has been completed. Three, no, 408 has not been completed, they still have everything in the yard, the utility trailers and the horse trailer. Town manager, Deonah and myself have sent out corresponding letters. We held a hearing, nobody showed up for the hearing, so we started finding the property to, for the violations. 310 West Nash Street, that one has been cleared, but we have fines on it because they did not come apply for the zoning permit. Of course, for you do any type of altercation to a building, you have to give us a zoning permit from the town. 224 Gum Avenue, that one's still one that we're still working on, trying to get the owner to clean up. Letters are going out again as of today, letting them know it needs to be cleaned. 302 West Nash, that one has been cleared. And 305 Wilders Drive, we're gonna reach out to the owner. He has made contact with us about the shipping container on getting that one removed. Only one still outstanding that we need to probably have our contractor address is 109 West Nash Street, right behind the town hall. Of course, the grownup weeds on the back of the building and around the AC unit. Also, the wild shrub growing up beside the gas pump sign telling you the price of gas per gallon. That one needs to be cleaned up, we may try to send out one more letter. If not, then we'll just go ahead and send out our contract to abate the nuisance since we have sent out over three letters already. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, that's what I have for you this afternoon, any questions from the board, sir?
If, Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may-
Yes.
If there are no questions. So I have some further updates. So 508 East Nash had communications with the property owner and will be developing, Mr. Lucas and I will be developing a punch list for them to address on that vacant property. 303 South Pine Street, the vacant lot here where GHRG used to be. We've had conversations with that property owner about addressing the two nuisances, the unkept lot, vacant lot, and also the saw cutting that's taken place on that property. So, hopefully, I did speak with the property owner, he said he would resolve those issues. We've yet to see that, but we'll continue on that. And lastly, if I may, bless you. Mr. Lucas raised the open fines. We have had some inquiries about abating these fines, and I would ask Attorney Edwards whether that would be a function of this board or the Board of Adjustment, given that I don't know whether that requires a quasi judicial process or not, so.
I mean, if you, I mean, it would only, that would have only come up if anybody appealed, but these people didn't appeal, right? So you're-
They did not, and not within the timeframe.
So if they haven't appealed, then the fine is there, and then the town can decide whether or not to take them to court to enforce the fee.
So that would, that, but that would be an act of this board, right?
Yes, yes, there'd be an ordinance, yeah, for us to do that. But then, that would be, that would be essentially us taking it to court.
Can you explain that or summarize that?
Well, I mean, and then that brings up the issue, and I can't tell you right this second, but, well, like I said before, if it was a $100 fine, it's gonna cost $5,000 in legal fees, it's not time, it's not worth it. As you can see in the, you know, at the end of Mr. Lucas's report, you've got a list of those fines and the amounts, and you can see what the amounts are there. So, what we probably need to do, since they, and they're, they're continuing to accrue, accrue, correct? I mean, so, so those are the, those are the, those are the fines as of today. They can come in and pay those fines today. Assuming they don't do that, they're only gonna get larger. The biggest hope would be that, I mean, the most typical way they would get paid is if somebody wanted to sell one of these lots, and in the process of selling these lots, they can't sell it until that fine is paid off.
Right.
So at least the town has some assurance, not assurance is the right word, but the town has, the town's debt is not gonna go away. You could just wait until these people sell their lots and then collect the fine at whatever amount it has accrued to at the time they sell the property. Or the town can pull the trigger and incur legal fees to collect. The legal fees would be immediate, the payment from the, from the court action would happen only after the property was sold on the courthouse steps. And then from that sale, the town would recoup, recoup its money.
Well, I raise this, if I may, Attorney Edwards, because some properties have transferred, some of these properties, and some are getting ready to transfer. And so I get questions from potential property owners sometimes about, are there, obviously, when their people are doing their due diligence, they will ask, are there any outstanding zoning violations? And there are.
Right, right, and if they, if they're buying it with doing a title search, then the title search will review, reveal the fine, and then typically, the person buying the property wouldn't buy the property until that fine was resolved at, at the closing table. But, yeah, that, that's possible, I guess, if they could transfer it. But that's, so I think what we probably need to do is sit down and figure out what properties and what fines are large enough for us to start taking collection action, and then bring, bring to the board a recommendation from us, from, from the town attorney, as to which properties we recommend that the town pass. Take a vote on whether or not to proceed to enforce the lien, enforce the, the fine. Anything else to add, anything, anything else to add?
That's right, they could all turn it over. All you need to be able to do that would be for us to request that you do that, you don't need a motion, correct?
Uh, I think if we were, once, well, well, you don't need to take a motion and a vote of what I just mentioned.
Right.
When we, when you're gonna actually decide to take legal action, you would need to take a vote.
You could recommend to us, yes.
Yeah, but we'll do that.
Do that, recommend to us the ones you all think would be justifiable to proceed.
Correct, we could do that, yes.
Question, what's gonna be, what, where is that cap gonna be at for us to, to make that decision? To say, hey, $16,000, are we gonna bust $16,000? Or we gonna stake $16,000, do you need to apply?
I need to figure out the legal fees, which I'm not prepared to do at this moment. Plus, you might want to consider, you might want to consider the, the value of the property, too.
Right, okay, right.
I think that's what he'll get back to us on.
Yeah, but I could do that, we could do that.
Some people, flatly put, some people simply aren't gonna pay them and can't pay them. Flatly put, some people aren't gonna pay them and they can't pay them, you know, this-
And they're gonna be subject to losing their property.
I mean, consider this for someone that, I don't wanna point out any one, any specific property, but let's just say that they got a fine on their property. They financially were not able to pay the fine. They financially weren't able to keep their house, you know, mortgage, they can't pay the payment. How do we enforce that? Someone's getting kicked out of their house because they foreclosed, and they can't afford their mortgage, and then we're trying to take them to court over $12,000.
Well, I don't think there are gonna be many that, and I, and Mr. Lucas can kind of speak to it maybe even more, but I don't think you're gonna have many that are quite in that situation, only because Mr. Lucas goes over and beyond to try to work with people to, before it gets to this point. So I don't know all the circumstances, all that, but I know that each of those landowners were given multiple, multiple, multiple chances to fix the property. And if they were making a good faith effort, even if it wasn't as fast as the town wanted, if they were making some effort to correct the problem, it wouldn't have got to that point. So, that's why I'm thinking, you're not gonna have many people in the situation you're talking about. But even having said that, if somebody wants to set up a payment plan, we can talk to somebody about that. So, and we can talk about them, and what, whatever they can pay, we can, we can work that out. So, you know, we're not, we already have, to this point, been working with them, and they're only on that list because they wouldn't work with the town. You know, anybody that wanted to work with the town isn't on that list, isn't that right? I mean, that, you know-
Pretty much everybody on the list, we have sent them several letters. The majority of the ones that want to work with the town, they come out to the hearing date, and they talk with me, the town manager, to see what we can do to get on the right track, too. We may can't do it all in the first month, but small steps to show that we are trying to stay on the right path.
Yeah, and I've never seen Sean not forgive, I mean, not, not to accomplish- Yeah. And I've never seen Sean not forgive, I mean, not, not to accommodate any reasonable requests.
We, we, we work really closely with property owners who wanna comply and oftentimes don't even get to the hearing process, work with them to kinda nip it in the bud.
But, you know, but, but if somebody was in a situation somewhat similar to what you described, then they, they would, if, if, I would think we could work on a reasonable payment plan. But I honestly, I honestly don't think there're gonna be many people in that situation. But we, you know, that's, the good thing about being a town this size is that, you know, we can handle each situation individually. We don't have to, we don't have to have a blanket policy where we're gonna handle them all the same way.
I just wanna make sure as a town, we're not strong-arming anyone into tens of thousands of dollars.
Mean as he looks, Sean is very forgiving.
Yep. And I was, I was one of the first ones, after we went to the Main Street America Conference, which we learned a lot. The second year that we went, the first year I came back with this vacant building ordinance. And then the second year, Brent Cohen, Commissioner Cohen came back and he really nailed this vacant building ordinance home. He kept it going until finally it got picked up. And so I've been pro, you know, this, this draft as we've been moving forward for the vacant building ordinance and for a lot of things in code enforcement. I just wanna make sure that we're being as fair as possible and reasonable as possible and not, and not overreaching, cuz I'm big on government not overreaching as well.
True.
Okay. Managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas.
Do you, do y'all have any questions about the managers' report? Just wanted to mention that the hydrological study did get underway. We hosted Stormwater Engineer a couple weeks ago during a rainy day, fortunately enough. And he's been, he's requested additional information. He's getting information from Nash County and other sources. And hopefully, we'll get to see something relatively soon. The deadline for that scope of work to end is actually February, so it should be a pretty short turnaround.
All right. And police chief. Good evening.
How are you?
Good, good.
All right. In this past month, we had five listed incident reports, four hundred and twenty total calls for service, under thirty-six traffic stops, hundred and seventy security checks, two traffic accidents, three domestics calls, three disturbance fight calls, nine total investigations with nine of those being cleared.
Okay.
I'd like to touch on something and ask a question to Mark real quick. When adopting the new ordinance tonight on eighteen, given everything a class three misdemeanor and that penalty, does that change the one that the board's already voted on that I presented earlier in twenty-four with the discharge of a weapon in the city limits? They were decriminalized in twenty-three, so that's why we brought it to the board about that one, because that's not actually a general statute. But I, the fine on that one's different and it is actually a class two misdemeanor. I don't know if, by adopting that, if I need to change the verbiage on the other one or.
No, if you can email me or text me the, the, or I can probably find, what, what month was that? I can figure that out. But it, but it does say, unless otherwise provided in this code.
Okay.
So because of what you're talking about is addressed elsewhere, it's not subject to this.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that with the new one being adopted, with that penalty and that class misdemeanor, if it would change this one that we already did.
This won't change that.
Okay, cool. That's all I need.
Thank you for diligence and checking on that. Very good.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more thing. We have a visitor tonight, Ms. Melissa Corso, the director of Braswell Memorial Library.
Hey, missed a question.
We had a meeting out at Spalding about a month ago now.
Yes.
And just to talk about how things were going. And so we invited Melissa to come to a meeting and this is the meeting she came to.
Thank you for being here.
Sure. My name is Melissa Corso. I'm the director of Braswell Memorial Library in Rocky Mount. I would've came sooner, but I'm full year now as director in the coming November, so I didn't wanna come and then not be it. And anyways, yes, Spring Hope has always been one of my favorite communities. I was a children's librarian for twenty years at Braswell, and I always loved coming out and doing outreach to the elementary. Now, the move to the rec center has been very positive for Braswell. That branch is one of our, well, the top two, and it's really close of having the most visitors come to that branch. Because of that, we are looking for opportunities to expand activities. We'll be having some computer classes coming up. We'll be having some genealogy classes, cuz we do that in Bailey. And also this summer, I'm sure many of you are familiar with the huge kickoff we have at Rocky Mount down at our big bran, or big library. Sorry, it's librarian, it's big library. We're looking forward to having the first kickoff at the branch, and we're gonna choose Spring Hope as that location. Because that, that rec center has a very large grassy area next to it, and I think it would just be really nice for the community to come out. And it also helps the children in Bailey and Middlesex too, cuz Spring Hope is like, you're kinda like center of all our branches. Except Whittakers, but that's a different thing. Sorry.
You gotta cross the tracks.
Cross the tracks, yes. But like I said, yeah, Spring Hope is one of our best branches. We have very little problems, very little incidents. We're looking, really looking forward to moving into the new space. That's exciting. We're gonna look forward to putting maybe a story walk. We mentioned that too, and I'll get that information to you. But yeah, like I said, we're very happy with our Spring Hope branch. Now, there have been some rumors, I don't know if you heard, there's that rumor mill of Nash County. Bailey Library is not closing. None of our branches are closing. What's happening is in 2026, which is next year, all of our branch agreements come up to discuss where we're gonna go forward. And I, I don't see any of our branches closing. The only thing that we may be doing is changing hours because some of our branches have very similar hours and they're not convenient to our patrons, especially those that are coming home from work. They wanna pick up a book, oop, the branch is closed. We wanna make that more accessible to the patrons. But yeah, any questions for me?
We appreciate you being here, and I'm, I'm curious to learn more about the, the program that you mentioned since we were two possibly sliding to that number one spot soon.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah. With, with, I think, once we move into that new location, we are gonna be doing a lot more publicity for our branches. Also, next year, Nash County is part of the America 250th anniversary. We have a Nash County committee. Anyone that wishes to join that, you're more than welcome. I can send information to each of you. We're also gonna look to have activities at the Spring Hope branch for that as well. But yeah, we're, we wanna really get the branch activity going because, you know, we, a lot of people can't make it to Rocky Mount, so. And Spring Hope is, is very important, one of our branches.
My daughter personally goes there once a week. She's homeschooled and she goes there every week as part of her, her classroom, so.
Okay, that's Spring Hope?
Mm-hmm. Right here.
Yeah, we are gonna maybe start doing some story times there, get our bookmobile up here more. A lot of exciting stuff's gonna be happening.
That would be fun. Thank you.
I'll be in touch with, with you. We'll get it started. Sorry if I'm nervous.
Hey, we appreciate it. Thank you for inviting her out, Andrew.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. And Nancy, please make sure to give her a good plug in there in the newspaper. Thank you so much. Thank you. And Cory, the Spring Hope Enterprise is here too. Braswell Memorial Library, thank you. All right. Well, in closing, Attorney Edwards, did you have anything to add?
I've talked enough.
Okay. Commissioner Ganey?
Well, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank this board for allowing me to serve the last few years for the vacated seat. I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to serve and I've enjoyed serving with each one of you. I thank the citizens for support. And I just wanna wish well the incoming board members. I look forward to seeing what y'all bring to the table and what y'all look to do in the future for town Spring Hope. Thank you.
Commissioner Lucas? Commissioner Lucas?
I don't have anything to say, but I'm gonna miss you.
That's right. That's right.
And I'm gonna miss you too, Drew.
That's right.
And I.
I'm not going anywhere.
No, you're not.
I'm not leaving up here, but I.
I, I, I worked with Drew for a long time and, and you, you don't become just co-commissioners, you become, and you did too, Eric. You become family, you know? And when you become family, you learn to love each other, okay, and respect each other. And that's what I have for you though. And thank you so much. Thank you.
Yes.
Been a part of my life. Thank you.
That's nice. It's a lot to serve, folks. It really is a lot to sit up here and serve. The, the whole weight of the town rests on these commissioner's shoulders. It's not an easy job. It can be a very stressful job. It can be a heart painful job, and it is a long hour job. Lot of phone calls, lot of emails, conversations. They do work hard. And Commissioner Ganey, I sat beside you at the DDB board meetings. I don't think you missed a single one, even when you moved up. And you were on the Downtown Development Board, promoted yourself up to the commissioner's seat. And congratulations, cuz that was a total of four, actually four years, not two. So you were involved heavily for four years, and I know you were before that, and I do hope that you will be as well, continue. Okay. Commissioner Griffin?
Just echo Eric's sentiments. Appreciate the community's confidence in me to, and allowing me to serve this board and serve this community, and it's been an honor. And I very much appreciate everyone's support. And much like Eric, certainly wish the best to the new board and all the new members, and I'm certain that you all have what's best for Spring Hope in mind. And any way that I can help anyone, resident or a board member or otherwise, I'll be right where I've always been and happy to help any way I can.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you. Glad to hear. You're not going anywhere, so you're gonna be right here with us. That's good. Thank you. And Commissioner Ganey, you'll be here as well, cuz a lot of experience, a lot of knowledge, sixteen years, Commissioner Griffin, sixteen years. That's a lot of knowledge, so I'll be calling on you. I'll be calling on you a lot. Commissioner, Tony, you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I'd like to say, man, I appreciate working with all of you, especially you three being commissioners with me also. I thank you for the knowledge that you've given me, being a newbie and coming into the town and my first year being here with you guys. I really appreciate that, and I consider each one of you friends and family.
That's right.
Anything I can do to help you guys, just, just let me know. And I'll keep each one of your telephones on speed dial, so. I'll just call for me too.
That's right. All right. If there's no further discussion or comments from the board, we can get a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank y'all for being here tonight. Motion adjourned.